All set? Want to wait? We're going to wait two minutes. Okay, the TV guys were asking. We'll wait two minutes.
What, you got a headphone in your helmet?
They came to the door.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm hearing voices.
It's kind of funny when you argue about the increase in rates or fuel. Rates go down and it's all for the rest. For the institutional authority.
Yes.
I'm looking over there at Paul's here.
Yeah. Three permanent, two.
My name's Jim Fox. Chairman of the Planning Board for this evening, and I'll call this meeting to order. The meeting of January 20, 2015 is called to order. First on the agenda is minutes of the January 6th meeting. Do you have any motion on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of January 6th and the special meeting of January 15th. As per.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. The next item is approval not required. However, the applicant has asked to have it withdrawn at this time. Take no action at this time.
A motion of the board not to endorse the plan.
Not to endorse the plan.
No, take no action. We need to vote on it.
It says to take no action, okay, or not to endorse. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do not endorse.
Do not endorse.
Do not endorse.
Patty, request the action.
Can we name the applicant, please? There are two.
Brian and Sandra McPhee.
Okay.
131 Carrot Shop Road, report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. The next one is approval not required for the applicant. Is there someone here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Bob Hament. I'm an attorney for the owner of the Falmouth Mall, O C W Retail Falmouth LLC. And I refer to them as Wilder because it's a division of the Wilder Company which owns the mall. Wilder has agreed with the Town of Falmouth, working with the town manager and the utilities director, to convey to the town a 6,000-square-foot parcel on Spring Bars Road for the town's sewer lift station to serve the municipal sewer in the area. The location of the 6,000-square-foot parcel doesn't affect the mall operations at all. In any case, the plan before you simply shows the carving out of the 32.8 acres, 38.2 acres, a 6,000-square-foot parcel that would be conveyed to the town.
I move we endorse the O W C Retail Falmouth LLC. Approval not required.
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous. Next on the agenda is decision. The applicant, Veronica Perry. Preliminary plan review to subdivide one lot into three lots located at 146 Central Ave., East Falmouth, BSS Design. Someone here for the applicant? Decision. Okay, does someone want to read the decision?
I'll read the motion. January 15th, 2015 draft preliminary plan, Veronica Perry, 146 Central Ave. Motion that the planning board vote to the following recommendations to address the issues raised under the subdivision regulations of the Town of Falmouth. Article 3, preliminary plans for a plan entitled preliminary subdivision plan Crystal Lane 146 Central Ave., East Falmouth, prepared by BSS Design dated December 9th, 2014, scale one inch equals 40 feet. Number one, a list of waivers from the planning boards rules regulations governing the subdivision of land must be included as part of the definitive plan application. Two, a grading plan for Lot 3 to the buildable portion of the lot should accompany the definitive plan. Three, all structures in the right way should be removed from the plan. A zoning determination should be sought from the building commissioner regarding the creation of Lot 3 in the frontage on a cul-de-sac as depicted on the preliminary plan. Four, the applicant is encouraged to consider a cluster concept for the subdivision similar to other no-road approvals the board has issued on Carrot Shop Road, Elm Road, and Hayway Road, copies of which are available in the planning office. Five, the applicant is encouraged to consider the installation of septic systems with enhanced nitrogen removal, given the proximity to Eel Pond, although the board realizes the application is not subject to coastal pond overlay district. Six, a note added to the definitive plan that trash collection and snow removal will not be the responsibility, will be the responsibility of the homeowners of Lots 2 and 3.
Second motion.
Any discussion? Yes, Paul?
One of the conditions is your cluster concept. When we took the site visit out to that area, the cluster concept looked very, very viable, in particular since it would move the property away from the, from the Eel Pond. So I would encourage again to consider that particular condition. Again, we can order it, but they should consider it. I think it's a very good concept.
Yeah, I would concur with that. If you're looking down the future, as we do on the LCP committee, if this area is going to be sewed in the future, it'd be much easier to sewer a cluster development closer to the road than it would be to the houses further back. So I would encourage that as well.
My only thoughts were, you know, the waivers, but this is really one additional lot is all we're doing here. So I don't, I'm not really a big fan of wavering all the, waiving all the subdivision, but when it's only one lot, I think it really makes sense to do that. So that was my only comment.
Yeah. Brian, would it be appropriate at this time to encourage them to retain the two large trees in the front part of the property, or would that be under the, the, not the preliminary plan, but the right, the final plan?
So I send along that guidance now. This is what this decision is all about. So you might want to do that in the condition as before that passes along your guidance for a cluster design in addition to staying away from the pond. You do preserve a large.
Rather than adding number seven? Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment then to the motion. Under number four, to add that the applicant is encouraged to retain the two large trees at the front of the property. That's it, I guess. Just to retain those two. Under the, under the, not the, what's the preliminary, not the preliminary plan, but the other?
Definitive.
Okay, well, during the, under, under the definitive plan, I guess.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the amendment? I'll hear a vote on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous. Any further discussion?
One of the reasons a cluster development was suggested is that it's a very heavily treated lot in the back, and by moving a cluster development up front, we would preserve a lot more trees on that site, as well as perhaps reconsidering the need for a enhanced nitrogen removal system because you're that much further away from the, from the water.
Any other comments?
Other than it would eliminate another dead end in Falmouth and would make rescue and fire vehicles make it better for them as well.
Well, I have one other comment, I guess. I don't think it really reduces the impact of the nitrogen. Although it's moved back, it's still close to the same water bodies. So I think that nitrogen removal is still important.
Vote on the, on the main decision here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. General correspondents? I don't have anything. Okay, can we adjourn our meeting or start anew? Do right into the next. But we invite you, the zoning board, to join us. Have some new faces here. We'll probably start off introducing ourselves. We'll start with you, Serge.
My name is John Sutherland. I've just recently joined the board. So new, I don't have a, a name plaque yet.
Hi, Kimberly Bealan. Oh, I'm a voting.
Ralph Burge, planning board.
I'm Larry, planning board.
Jim Fox, planning board.
How do you say on the planning board?
Paul Dreyer, clerk of the planning board.
Ken Meders.
Mark Moore, associate member of the zoning board.
I, Terrence Harvey, voting member of the zoning board.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming. I think we had, as a board, had discussed the need to take a look at our code, but I, you folks have suggested it many times. So what we're anticipating having here is really not going to get into details of the things we want to change. We want to like to have a overview discussion, a broader range about how, how we're going to approach this change and discuss some of the pluses and minuses of the approaches. I don't really want to take, we can't get into the specifics tonight. We don't have the time for it. It's not, not the intention. So, well, we welcome this opportunity to have you here. God knows we all have dealt with this bylaw of 240 with some of its changes over the years, the revisions have been in place, and sometimes the difficulty in writing a, a decision and trying to reference all the key points is, can be somewhat cumbersome for staff and for our own members in the public to understand. We, we've all had that, that's our case on it. We kind of have, there's two different ways to discuss, or two, many different ways, but one of the things I wanted to hear from everybody, well, we hear from you folks on what your thoughts are first, on what, on why you are recommending this and the changes you like to see. We will start off listening to the zoning board first, and so we wonder who's the most senior member? That's you.
Oh, thank you. So obviously, I am pretty new to the board. I've been on it for a year, but this is, I think, a torch that the zoning board's been trying to carry for a long time. And I know Mark McNamara, David Haddad, Ken Foreman, who can't be here tonight, that there are real concerns. Patty, who's still on the board, there's real concerns about, I think, the substantive revision, recodification. I know that we had the general code look at, kind of provide us with an overview. That was the first step in this after receiving money from town meeting or having money appropriated. And in our opinion, or I think, I speak for the zoning board, I hope so, I know that we've talked about it a little bit at an open meeting this weekend, that wasn't enough. I think that we really want the code to be reviewed for substantive reasons. There's conflicts throughout, and I, I think we would like a legal analysis of the zoning code. And I hope I don't, Mark, Mark, you've been there, I think, through this, so.
Well, just, I don't know how familiar you are with the background of this, but Article 9 of 2013, the spring town meeting, voted unanimously. I think there was a amendment to the actual motion to be, it was going to be at the discretion of the town manager. And so, just like Kim had said, general code had done an initial review that, in my opinion, and I think the opinion of the board, didn't meet the expectation of not only the intent of Mr. McNamara and the board, but also the intent of town meeting. And I think the, the crutch of the matter is there's so many inconsistencies currently, and I think the explanation of that town meeting was there's been numerous revisions or, or not revisions, but numerous years that have gone on without review. And so, as this becomes more prolonged, as far as time, there's a potential for inconsistencies to crop up. And I think the zoning board has identified that and won the approval of town meeting. And so now we're here trying to figure out how do we move forward? And I think Kim captures it from a third-party legal sense to identify, number one, the inconsistencies, and then what we do with them after and come back to a joint meeting.
So it sounds like, I mean, one of the topics for tonight was discussion was repair or rebuild. It sounds like repair isn't on the agenda for you folks, that it's, it sounds like it's a rebuild. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I guess, I guess I don't like either word. You know, obviously, the zoning code is what it is, so all the substantive provisions are there. I don't think it's a matter of repairing and putting a period or a semicolon in certain places like general code suggested, but I also don't think it's, we're starting from ground zero and we're working our way up because all the substantive stuff is here. It's just a matter of making it make sense and making sure that there's no inconsistencies. I'm, I'm an attorney. I see a lot of zoning codes. I have binders full in my, in my office, and, I mean, I've been on the board for a year. I think this is very, not user-friendly at all. I think it's kind of, it's kind of difficult to understand. There's different parts where I'm saying, oh, I wouldn't have even thought to look there, but that could apply here. So I think it's a matter, I don't want to say, maybe even simplifying. Simplifying, but so that it's up to date, it all makes sense, there's none, none of those inconsistencies. I mean, there may be inconsistencies because that might be the nature of it, but that we, we know about inconsistencies and that we fix those. So I don't, I mean, I guess repair in some sense, rebuild in some sense, but I don't think it's one or the other.
Well, I was thinking, are we starting over? And, you know, that's what I, rebuilding is, I was looking at, let's say, your demolished house, you're starting, the frame's no good, you start over and you put the new foundation in and you work your way back up again, or are you just replacing parts of it and updating it as you go through? That was, this is discussion.
Right.
I'm using that analogy, but what are your thoughts on it? Do you think we could?
Well, again, I, it's not starting from zero to me. It's.
Well, I mean, we could change the way we, there's, there's different zonings. Our zoning is somewhat antiquated. There's other, other towns have used a form-based approach to it and what you, the goals you want to accomplish, and then they try to boil it down to simply, we'd have to start over to do that. You can't mix it. The other approach is, are we looking to bring in a consultant, a third party, or, and pay a lot of money to have it totally redone? Or having, what's the process? How long a time do you want to spend on this? I mean.
I think the idea that we had floated as a board was having a third-party attorney, somebody like a Mark Bobrowski, though I'm just putting that name out there, I don't think it's necessarily Mark Bobrowski, but somebody who deals with these zoning bylaws all the time, who reviews them, who can come in and say, this isn't working, this isn't up to date with the law, there's been some changes, somebody analyzing it, looking at it, telling us what the next step is, I guess, after we have a third-party look at it. And, I mean, I'm just one member. I don't know if everybody else is on the same page, but.
I just wanted to ask on the zoning board's perspective, are there some articles that you have more problems with, there's more inconsistency than others? Is that, or is it just inconsistencies throughout that bother them? That's what I just wanted, is that?
I would probably defer, I think that there, can I defer to Saray? I know she's been dealing with this now.
I think it's more than just inconsistencies. There's some things that need to be added, even new definitions that come up, and you need those dispersed around sections that affect that, which isn't necessarily always done, something that gets overlooked. There are conflicts and there are inconsistencies throughout, is what the board determined. I mean, we had an issue, we're not going to get into details tonight, but, I mean, some of them have created appeals even, so.
The process is, is part of the thing we wanted to talk about tonight. You know, when we do a new bylaw, we have public discussion. We bring in people that are affected by it. They have to listen to both sides. Sometimes third parties are brought in, just even on one article. I mean, it's, a review could take an enormous amount of time, you know, if we didn't approach it properly, if we, so, or we could start combining groups of articles and have discussion on them at one time. How do you folks envision that process? That, you know, both in the amount of review that, for the public and the review for ourselves and time-wise? What are you thinking on that?
Mark, any thoughts or?
I would, I mean, I think the intent, when it was one approval at town meeting was, the appropriation was $35,000, and I think the argument was to then bring in some sort of entity that would do a review, and then upon that review, identify what needs fixing. And then, that's when the process that you just said is engaged. But at least we would have things to work on. Right now, you know, for lack of time, we don't want to detail what various board members think need patching, but I think if you have that come from a third part, identify it and then bring it back to a joint meeting or airing to see, is that really a priority? Or can we float it? I mean, I, I think that should be the process right now, but number one, the process has to start. And the process, in my eyes, and I think I speak for the board, has not started. And so that's what we're trying, trying to collaborate into what is the first step to start on this process. So that's my opinion.
Yes, Ralph?
Yeah. Well, I think that maybe a possible word to, would be appropriate for this would be to upgrade the chapter 240. I've been on the board, planning board, for 12 years, and I would hate to think that I would have to start learning a brand-new regulation all over again. There's a, there's a huge learning process when you're on the planning board or the zoning board of appeals, and it takes a long time to assimilate enough information through the regulations to make good decisions. And if you started over, all over again, you would be asking your staff to start all over again, and it doesn't seem practical to me. It seems to me that this, that the regulation needs work and that an upgrade of it, I've, I've skimmed the editorial and legal analysis, and I, and I came up with four things, just reading this afternoon, that I would be recommending just as a starter. So a professional person certainly would have more than that, and it's, it's evidenced by some of the work that general code already, already has done. So to me, it makes sense to start now, like Mark said. Of the 35,000, I don't know how much general code was paid for this initial portion, do we know, for 3,000? So we have adequate funds remaining to hire someone or to ask them if they have, if they have the expertise to go ahead and do a more thorough analysis. But they, in this, in this report, they ask us, you know, do, do you want, do you agree with what they said? Do you want to revise it, or do you want to leave it as it is? So this is, this was a, I thought, a pretty good start for, for upgrading, upgrading this 240. But for me personally, to have to go through and learn a whole brand-new, start-from-scratch regulation, there's too much of it is okay, but there are things that need to be upgraded.
So I read through it too, and I think only time will tell and show us where more problems are than what they've identified, and maybe staff could relate some more information at a later date as to what they see as. at a later date as to what they see as problems from having more of a history with it. But I read through all these and checked off as many boxes as possible, and I think just fixing all of they have found to begin with would be a start to get us thinking in terms of, you know, how to repair it. Once we've checked up all these boxes and dealt with all the problems that we've already identified, then we can see what we're left with, and if it makes sense, maybe we can look at another town that has a code that's organized in a different way to give ourselves other ideas.
Yes, Paul?
It's my understanding that this code's been there for more than 50 years and just been tweaked all along, so clearly there are some inconsistencies, and as technology and development occurs, there are inconsistencies. I think the concept of having an outside counsel look at this is a very good one because they'd be more efficient and more focused on what needs to be done. However, I would suggest perhaps we have a subgroup of someone from zoning board of appeals and planning board, help that individual orient themselves on the biggest issues that we are faced now. This is probably more true with the zoning board of appeals because you deal with some of these issues more than we do, but you can focus in on the critical areas that are, that give you heartburn, and we perhaps don't have so many. But if we were to have maybe a subgroup working with that consultant, I think that would help move things along very quickly. I think the comments in that other document are very well-done, but I concur, I think we need to move sooner rather than later on this issue. I think it's very important.
How do we feel as a board, or boards, of our knowledge and understanding with the personnel we have here for the, for the zoning, I mean, Ralph has mentioned, he's been here 12 years, I've got a, I'm in the second term a few years, but a lot of us are very new. Do we need to step back and do a little training first, or what are your, what are your thoughts on that? We, we've got some pretty big concepts, the ones that I see coming up all the time are some of the most difficult, or pre-existing non-conforming, is an issue that affects our town, and our, our bylaw has tied it up all different ways. Do we all understand that? Or is that, I don't really know. What do you, what do you guys think about that? How about your time with the, the code as it stands right now?
We just had a workshop on Saturday, and one of my comments was that not being an attorney, not being familiar with real estate or anything like that, though having a procedural aptitude, I found myself in the present code, and many of the things are good and laid out, but I'm hopscotching around trying to figure out something to make a good decision. And I think whoever used the word to simplify hit the nail on the head. As far as procedural, I think if, if a third-party were to take a look and identify what they're paid to do and then bring it back for our review, then we could, depending on priorities, go in his suggested or her suggested direction while putting something on the back burner. So I would say, you know, let it move in the direction of the intended town meeting, and that was to do a, not a revamp or a rebuild or anything like that, but the first step is to identify what's problematic. Once those problematic issues are identified, then it becomes our responsibility to say, how do we prioritize these? And so that's, that's what I would hope collaboratively the boards move towards.
Can I ask a question? So Mark, are you saying that you feel like this didn't really hit them, the subject?
That came out right when I started as an associate, but I recall during one of the meetings that a member said the attempt was trivial to the intent of what was presented at the town meeting. So it, it's a matter of reviewing the conflicts, because there's, there's quite a few, and so if we could identify those and then say, okay, these are the conflicts, how do we want to fix it then? So to answer your question, Doug, is, is I was new, but my feeling and my experience on the board now has showed me that, boy, this needs to be addressed because I'm pulling my hair up.
And that's not easy.
You're doing a good job.
I just wanted to add and say, you know, I know TJ's an attorney, I'm an attorney, Matt McNamara was an attorney who was with this for a long time, years, so it's not a matter of whether or not we understand it or we're getting the pre-existing non-conform use component, we, we know how to read the law. I think it's the fact that the laws, how it's coming across, isn't always clear, and I know I've read it sometimes and said, eh, but you could read it this way, or you could read it that way. And I think partially, and I, I don't want to speak for the whole zoning board, but I know that was my trouble with the general code review because it's, if seven of us think, yeah, we should add a period there or a semicolon there, five of us don't think we should, and those semicolons and periods change the whole meaning of something. So that's why I think, I think the suggestion that we have a smaller subcommittee who works with the consultant, have somebody who professionally looks at these all the time, it's not, I think, obviously, we have great staff, experienced staff, but I think sometimes you work with something so much, or you look at something so much, it's good to have a fresh set of eyes and somebody who sees these from town to town to say, you know what they did over there, you could probably do this here, or, you know, I've seen this done before, maybe we could change, change this so that it's laid out or formatted differently, or, you know, even if it's not starting from scratch, and I agree, I don't think we need to start from scratch, I think we have a good bylaw, it's just a matter of making it so that it's consistent and that all those changes that have been incorporated over time make sense.
Do you think, go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was thinking, not to wrap it up, but if both boards would get together, talk about a scope of work for this individual we're going to hire, and then merge the two things together, agree on that, that would be one of our next steps if we, if we, is that what you're saying? I mean, we're basically bringing in a, a legal consultant to, well, to go through with, you know, item by item, with all the simplifying whenever possible. We need to put a scope of work together, not to just say, hey, we need to fix this, we need to give them some specific directions. You're shaking your head no.
But we've tried that. We've tried, we've tried for almost a year. That's what the frustration level of this board has been. The committees can't meet, or, you know, issues come up. So I think what the board's main agenda is, trying to find out, are we going to get a legal consultant to review this? They don't need a scope of work, in all due respect. I mean, I worked for a town where they just came in, they reviewed it, they reset it up, they took out the conflicts.
What I'm talking about, what I'm taking is, go, the scope of work, go through this review and then take all the conflicts out, that's what I'm saying, I mean, at least they give them that kind of instruction, we just don't hear them say, fix it, right?
What they do is they come in and they read it themselves.
Okay.
That's what my experience has been. They, they read it themselves and then they do exactly what Mark said. They give their opinion, generally, they give it to the planning board as they
Right.
are the ones that basically write the bylaws for it, and then share it at a joint meeting, and I think, however which way you guys go, that's the best.
And our, our process also, you have to remember, is the public discussion part of it, we don't change anything without having
That doesn't happen until the whole review's done.
Right.
By the, whoever the town ends up hiring, and after the planning board and CPA look at it, that's when they determine, or planning board, I should say, what may or may not change based on the outcome. Have I got that right?
Well, I just recall my first time on the board, we make a little change to the wind turbine bylaw, and how long we spent reviewing that, it was quite a, quite an undertaking to listen to the changes, have the public comment.
But you're not, it could be all one article, the whole bylaw would be, I mean, the thing on how it's done, you've got a great foundation. There are inconsistencies, there aren't conflicts, and that's what these people do. They come in, they look at them, either recodify it or different issues. It's not like taking one article, and that's what you hire a consultant or whoever even to do. It's not like you personally have to do it, you review what they wrote.
I totally agree with what Sarai said and what Mark said. If we try to fix inconsistencies and review and bring it in, we create probably more. We don't even know how many are out there and the impact of those inconsistencies. Inconsistencies, so looking at it right now, it needs to be reviewed and tell somebody legally, tell us what to do. What you said is a good point, though, there may be certain things that are a continued problem, and maybe a list of, article this is the biggest problem, article that, and just hand that to them and say, we see problems with this, when they do it, and they might find ways to improve some of those in a better way than what they're at.
And I think your concern is grounded in the fact that there needs to be a vetting process, but we need to identify what needs to be vetted, and so I think the first motion that collaboratively the board should make is to say, who can most effectively and efficiently identify what the problems are to be vetted? And so I think that's our first step. So, but I don't want to downplay the need for vetting, and I think Sarai hit it where once we are given the work as far as one, two, three, four, five, six, seven are the conflicts in your code, then it comes back to us, and then, so we prioritize or we discuss, and then all of a sudden, public input gets their say.
Paul?
What I'd like to see, if, if we do hire a consultant firm or whatever, besides getting out the inconsistencies and the semicolons and the periods and all that, I'd like to see a lot of our bylaws streamlined. One of my observations over the past couple of years since I've been on this board and on the subcommittee is, you have a bylaw that says you can do this, but then if you get a special permit, you can do this, this and that. And that gets a bit onerous from my perspective. I, I would like to see something a little more clean-cut and a little more by right just by streamlining some of these, these bylaws that we have.
I, I agree, I'm, the, the special permit process can go in all different directions, and it can be quite cumbersome. I'm not, I don't quite have, share the confidence that some of the other people reflected about the quality of, of the, this document, I, I just see so many different things where as, with the town meeting involved in it, that's who changes it and votes it, and every little group covers their own little piece and protects, protects theirs, and you've got conflicting interests, and it just gets wound up and wound up. And when we go through, looking at a, whether a lot, I don't know how many of you ever try to see if, look at a piece of land and see if it's buildable or not, and all the different things you have to go through to do it, it's, it's really, really tough. I wish it was much more streamlined and clearer so that people could understand it. The build, the lot buildability worksheet is pretty complicated, to take all the different ways you could take a piece of land that's been on a plan for years and years and years, and the convoluted who owned this and who owned the next door and what year they owned it and what it is. I don't share the confidence that it's that solid of a document, but that's only my opinion, I, I think we could make great improvements to it, but I, I have a hard time with, with the, the precedence and the process that we go through, and there's all the different ways that we can look at our land use going forward. I, I don't think it's clear at all. That's my own opinion. But I'm willing to, I like the idea, I'm not, I'm 100% of what they're suggesting, I just wanted to point that, that aspect out, you know, that for the land use side of it and what we do with it going forward, I just don't think it's that clear at all. But it may be a legal issue when it's based in, in state law, and I defer to the attorneys on that aspect of it, I'm just, as a practitioner of trying to do a little building and development this town, it can be quite difficult to understand it. Well, what's our, what's our next step? And if I can just, say?
I was going to suggest, we've individually spoken about this and suffered through it, and it would appear to me that the next step would be to have a, a letter from both boards, signed by both boards perhaps, to the town manager suggesting that we hire this consultant and work with him or her to, to address this issue, but put it back in front of the town and say, look, we encourage you to do this for the following reasons, and start the ball rolling. They do have funding, as I understand it, for some of this, so if we don't make that step, this really isn't going to happen. And my consensus, or my understanding consensus here, that virtually everyone agrees it should happen in some fashion, so why don't we just make a motion that the two boards support this concept and present it to the town administration?
Before we do that, so now we have this beginning document, are we going to try to work with this at all? Are we going to just say, we don't like it, start over? I mean, I think we should consider whether or not we're going to do anything with this, and I don't remember what type of agreement we've entered into with this company, but this is just a preliminary, right? Or is this?
That's just their scope of work, it's complete.
That's their total project?
It's just flush.
Okay.
I think our vision is a part of it.
Okay. So we're free to do whatever we like with a new contractor, or ask them for a, a better service if there is one?
All right, what I'm hearing from the boards tonight is that you want to build on the general code, like to expand the scope of work, but I'm sure you're probably a consultant who have a high bid, the keywords I've heard here tonight are inconsistencies, simplified, you want to build on general code, want to upgrade, you want to do some comparative analysis, you want, maybe not a scope of work, but you want to communicate this to the town management in some fashion, not to, as well as your boards here. So what I can do for you is craft something up for your consideration at your next meetings, if you vote out of your sort of board meetings, and bring a modified document here to, to the town manager. The whole agrees, it was always envisioned that this was the first cut, despite the number of revisions there, it was never envisioned to be the final document, the level of effort being available, we all understand it's somewhat of a strength, crucial, metric proposed to be granted, a whole rewrite and talk sometimes I'm aware of, it's a six-digit now, five. So that's what I'm hearing from the boards tonight, I don't think I need a, I need a motion for me tonight, I think I have enough of those concepts, considerations of the board, and I'll see if Sarai did that to you, where are your considerations?
So we're talking about working within this $35,000 budget that we have, or is that what we're talking about here?
If that's the case.
That's what I meant about scope of work, I wondered how big this is.
The intent of the bylaw was to give, or the article was to give the process 35,000. If they found that it required more, they have to go back to town meeting for it. This was a suggestion, it's a number that came up from, we checked with three different land use attorneys who do this, they suggested 35 to 50,000.
We could stop at 35, and if we need more, we have to go back.
We talked and figured 35,000 was probably
Conservative.
Yeah, that it would get us hopefully very close to what we wanted.
So we kind of?
Yeah, some of the things as a board, you know, this is going to say about is more day-to-day things of, you know, finding these under section six, or special presence issue, or overturning, or review of ability to issue those decisions, things the planning board doesn't ever get, variances and whatnot. If you're more interested in fixing the bylaw, bringing in new concepts that can advance along your planning, the form-based, just have what it does. So if I try to agree with that together? Let's try and bridge that together a little bit, the day-to-day, the townies together, the things that the planning board's envisioning perhaps around harbor, it's May streets and the concepts that you wouldn't need to-
I'm hearing both of them.
So should we continue on working with this and at least fix the obvious stuff for now?
I think if the board members find things that need some sort of, you know, the war closes early September, there are things that priority, the planning board or the board of appeals got identified for November town meeting, and our kinds of pin John and future stuff, by the time we get someone on board, could be a holistic or in-depth or part of the review, finish that by September, so it's eight months.
At least this could then be more legible to the person reviewing it.
Oh, I'm sure whoever picks that up to, to upgrade and build on, find out in this book for the day stuff, see what things the planning board wants.
Does that timeline work for everybody? Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, I'm not addressing the timeline, it sounds good to me. I just want to make sure of a couple of things. This, this thing that we got here that was done by general code, it says that it's a workbook, that's what this thing is, so it's a workbook for us to decide whether we want to, you know, do something about it, the things that they put out, put out in there. Gives us three options, revise, don't revise, or make no changes. But the planning board, and I think occasionally, probably the zoning board of appeals also, deals with the subdivision control law, and so this particular thing that we're talking about is not addressing that, it's just looking at two forty.
Right, the board of appeals would act as a planning board on a B project, and it would be looking at subdivision control, only addressing the zone.
Okay, so this would not be, we're not talking about the, whoever gets hired to take a look at the subdivision control law at all? Okay.
Those regulations are-
Pretty much, they're, they're pretty dictated by the state a lot, aren't they?
They're wholly different than zone.
I know.
Subdivision control, the visions, it's not vision zone.
I know, but it's something that we have to deal with.
Yes, and the board of appeals would have to have a pretty good understanding, unless you get a point, vision or something like that. No, this is just all about the zone. Okay, so next step, we'll need to, I'll pick what's to read, we'll draft something up for the boards, and the next step, communication with town management moving forward in a timeline, and bring in some of the bigger artillery to advance the concept of, to simplify the bylaw, building on the general code.
I also wanted to just bring up, at least this is my own point of view, and I've brought up several times, I really don't want to set aside some of the specific changes we've already voted on moving forward on, you know, we as a board have voted that we wanted to update the accessory apartment bylaw right away, because we feel that it is a way of to bring housing, additional housing to the town, and I really don't want that to get set aside, I'd like to work on an apparel, of course, or at least bring it up as part of this right away, if that's possible.
Because the work that's being envisioned here to advance this general code, this is going to be an absolute, that's how you found out, and I know the planning board's interested in some implementation of the housing, the study, about it together with the whole, is that on concept, is that on parallel track?
That's just, that's the word, apparel, I don't know if you, we've never discussed it with you folks, I don't know if you've thought about it, but those are two issues that we've talked about probably more in the local comprehensive plan, but at the whole board on, as far as addressing some of the housing issues, which are really difficult, there's lots of them, but there's a few of them that can be fixed sooner rather than later. So, one of them, at least in our opinion, was the accessory bylaw, it is, we tried years ago, we really haven't been able to do much, it really didn't spur on much development, but it's really, in my opinion, the quickest way to bring affordable housing into the neighborhoods, if we design it properly, if we craft the right bylaw.
Simple and user-friendly and not inconsistent by law, it'll be good.
So, I mean, so we, I want to make sure we keep that parallel, and we're, it's probably too early to talk about other things, but there are other issues we need to move along on it, but I don't have anything else, does anyone else?
Yeah, I get a point worth it. Do we need a motion to be able to charge you, Sari, to do this?
He just mentioned we didn't, so that's why.
Well, when I emphasize that.
The motion will be, once you have a draft letter.
Okay.
It's going to draft something, and each board will get it.
Right now, we made a motion, something like that.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Yeah, Brian, could you review for all of us just briefly, the difference between requests for proposals and requests for services, and there's also a dollar figure, I think it's fifty thousand dollars, less than fifty thousand?
We don't-
You don't have to-
We don't need, we don't have to procure under the procurement act, a legal service.
Okay. As long as it's under fifty thousand, is that right?
I don't even believe there's a-
No, but it's state or there's no, we don't.
We will probably use best business practices, unless there's someone out there that does this, you know, that's clear of the head of authority, this town management uses best business practice, we pick up the phone, we'll scope of work, use the idea, even though technically, and they've got a lot to know, too, they've got, you know, a lot to do.
So in other words, you're saying, you're saying you would call two or three people and say, this is the deal, get back to us?
Yeah, this, even general code, I had to, before we actually spent three thousand dollars, you know, I called general code, they're in New York, there's very, very specialized firms, I think it's the Copen's, Warren up, some folks out in Seattle, trying to get at least a couple calls.
Yeah, okay.
Technically, no.
All right. I don't know if everybody knew that.
So will we, when I first read this, like this worksheet form like Ralph pointed out, I suspected that we might come to a meeting, not this one, but sometime when we're more prepared, and go through this, sort of like we would do a warrant booklet at a town meeting or a precinct meeting, and just have a discussion on, and check off the boxes, in agreement?
I think we will be able to do that as two boards, and come back and compare notes, and say, we versus the priority vote for this, but not that. So we'll still utilize what's been said, general code together, but we're not going to be taking too deep, because obviously it was the first, first blush, and we're going to bring in someone else to advance the document.
Anybody else?
Thank the board for the guidance, always good to know if it's on your mind before we head out.
For you newcomers, good luck, welcome, I'm glad you're coming to help. This is a daunting challenge here. I watch you folks a lot on TV, I don't know if they follow you pretty closely.
We watch you, too.
We're watching you.
That's what my girlfriend says, I'm watching you.
You guys do a good job.
Thank you. I move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Return, thank you.